Meeting of the Berkeley County Commissioners now called to order. Items from the public. Please state your name, please.
Good morning. And I want to thank the county commission for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Alfred Benjamin. I'm a retired firefighter from New York. And I'm speaking on policy of employment of family members. I just want to say that this time of the year is a very tough time of the year for me because of the terrorist attack on the World Trade Center, especially in September. So I wasn't able to appear at some of these meetings in the month of September. But I'm here to speak on behalf of firefighters, especially in Berkeley County, which the policy of employment of family members. I just want to say that 343 firefighters died in the World Trade Center initial attack. But since that attack, 343 more firefighters lost their lives due to illnesses and injuries of the World Trade Center attack, which brings us to 686 firefighters that lost their lives as of today. Today is the anniversary of my retirement, which is 11 years right now. And I'm having a tough time right now because I suffer from injuries and illnesses from the World Trade Center. So I take myself as being very blessed at this moment. And speaking on the behalf of other firefighters, it's always said that there's no guarantees. But I'm here to say that's not true because there is a guarantee that if you call the fire department, there's a guarantee that they're going to respond. So that when they're saying that there is no guarantee, it's not 100%, which nothing is. So on the behalf of the firefighters, I want to say when you're at home with your family, be it holidays, Christmas, Thanksgiving, they're at work, not with their family. So we need to take care of them like they take care of us. 24 hours, seven days a week, they're on call and they will respond. Be it a simple emergency or a serious emergency, be it fires or illnesses, they will respond. So I think that we should take care of them the way they take care of us. 24 hours, seven days a week, not only when we need them on a call, be it fire or emergency, but 365 days, we need to take care of them like they do us. So I want to thank this commission for giving me an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Thank you for your service and congratulations on your retirement. Any other items from the public? Please state your name for the record, please.
My name is Tom Wrestler. I'm from Falling Waters and I'm here to address the funds being spent at the Sportsman's Paradise area. Now that is a flood plain. Here is from 1972, the flood that went through there wiped out. I stood on the railroad tracks and watched and witnessed it. And there you are, you're trying to put money in something that Mother Nature is sooner or later going to take back. So I don't know why you're spending these funds. There's a lot of other areas that you could provide, parks, recreation. And if you do put an area down there, it is going to end up like it was before. Especially if you have all seasons, people down there living in campers, buses, tents, whatever. Think you are wasting a lot of taxpayers' money on this project. Build a store. Okay, what are you going to sell? Alcohol? What's going to happen then? We're going to have parties, we're going to have altercations between individuals. You're going to waste EMT money when they fall in the river and you're going to have to go down and retrieve them because they're intoxicated. So, and of course, you know, with altercations, you're going to have to have a deputy, a security. You got funds to cover all those items? Is it going to be just, how are you going to get down there in the winter time? Is that going to be something you're going to, the county's going to have to maintain and take care of? I think there's other areas you could spend that money on and provide more recreational opportunities for the northern part of the county. And I hope you will look into that to take care of that. Meanwhile, take time, think about it, just take a few minutes. See what else you can do to make the lives of the citizens of the county better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wrestler.
Thank you.
We do have a modified agenda today. Our 10:50 interview will not be here and our student county commissioner will not be able to make it as well. So I need a motion to approve a modified agenda.
I move to approve the modified agenda for Thursday, October the 5th, 2023.
Properly moved, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. As have it. Any questions on the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, on the purchase law? Any questions on the purchase law? It's kind of extensive today.
Yeah, it's a big number because there's lots of items.
Right. Mr. Wine, we have no internal budget revisions this week?
That's correct.
That's a good thing, I guess. Change of status. I have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie Dallagetti, prosecuting attorney for Jared Smallwood as assistant prosecuting attorney with an annual salary of $81,000 effective October 16, 2023. Have a new hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, chief court martial for Tammy Fairclough as part of a part-time custodian with an hourly rate of 1780 an hour effective October 16, 2023. New hire recommendation received from Tim Sia, community corrections director for Melody Schaefer as a Joe Tip recovery coach with an annual salary of $43,135. That's effective October 16, 2023. Change of status received from Jennifer Swisher for Samantha Knoll and Emily Rosen. They are going from call taker to telecommunicator one with a salary increase of $46,356 to $50,351 effective October 11, 2023. Have a change in staff received from the Honorable Larry Hess, the assessor for the following effective October 1, 2023. Cody Legg is going from Department 406 to 407 as an assistant with a salary increase from 47, I'm sorry, $49,700 to $53,000. And Rhonda Loudon is going to an assistant with a salary of increase from $64,775 to $68,750. September 21 meeting, everyone was present for that meeting. On the commission calendar, obviously we are here today. Monday, the 9th, we will be closed. And I'm assuming that the LEPC and the Water and Sewer District, Water and Airport will not meet as well. I'm assuming because other agencies should be closed as well.
No, the water's meeting is fine.
They're still meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal.
On land protection is Tuesday.
Okay. So on Tuesday, the 10th, at 2 o'clock, the 911 advisory board meeting. And then farm land protection will be at 6 o'clock. On the 11th, at 9:30, Development Authority, and at 6 o'clock, the Roundhouse. And next Thursday, on the 12th, the Fire Board will be meeting. Any motion to approve the consent agenda?
Let me make a motion, have we approved the consent agenda for October the 5th, 2023?
Been properly moved?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it, thank you. Mr. Hess, you're up, sir. How are you doing today?
I'm good.
Good.
What's up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got a few things this week, had a busy week. And so I've got a couple extras this week to bring to you. First thing I have is we had one taxpayer error. They reported a vehicle they shouldn't have, but had marked it as a taxpayer error. It's in the amount of $422.74. I've got to get your approval on that.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the taxpayer error personal property tax exoneration.
Mr. President, I move to accept the taxpayer error exoneration in the amount of $428.74.
Been properly moved?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Oh, excuse me.
Opposed?
Aye.
Negative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second thing I have would be personal property exonerations or corrections for taxpayer error, office error for personal property. I've got two pages of them, 16 total, with a list, what's listed there for the reasons. They total up to $6,881.44.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the personal property exoneration that just described by the assessor.
I'll make a motion to approve personal property exoneration due to office error for the amount of $6,881.44.
Second.
Been properly moved, in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have it, thank you.
Thank you.
And you have one more?
I have one more, which is office error for real estate. We had to correct, there was an acre mistake we had to correct. So I had to go back and correct that in the amount of $98.58.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the real estate exoneration as described by the assessor.
Still moved?
Second.
Been properly moved, in second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? As have it.
Follow my head?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Order meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Well, I had a couple meetings last week. We had a museum board meeting. It was our second meeting. It went pretty well, we met over at the library. We had discussions on a few different things, direction of the museum, sources of funds, a few things like that. We've devised a plan. We want to get a full, we can call it, project layout of what the plans would be. So we're working to get an agency to put that together for us. Architects or design engineers to put that together for us so that we can then start looking at revenue options. So that, and then we talked about taking a trip with the board members around to different So that, and then we talked about taking a trip with the board members around to different historic sites and places that could be hubs of museums throughout the county, you know, because this will be the main hub. And then we talked about the possibility of moving the CBB to the old courthouse there and attaching that as part of the museum and getting that open as a beginning. But we're all in the beginning stages of everything, but we have a good plan, everybody's working well together, and I think things are going well there. That was the really only meeting I had. There was a meeting the other week, but we had a shortened agenda last week, so I didn't get to address some of these other things from the week before. I did have a home consortium meeting. They gave out five new loans, two to Jefferson County, one in Ransay, one in Berkeley, and one in the city of Martinsburg. So there's some movement there, which is good because it had been stale for a long time because of crisis of homes and things and median and what they were allowed to loan for and all that. There are some vacancies on that board, one in the city, one in Jefferson, one in Morgan. We're solid in Berkeley right now. Overall, listings are down right now. It is a, becoming a buyer's market, not a seller's market any longer. Prices were up in Jefferson County, the mean was 375. Berkeley was down a little bit, I think we were around 275. And other than that, standard meeting. And then there was a CBB meeting. They did approve the grant for the 250th commemorative mural for Frog Hollow Trail for an amount of $18,000. So they're, we want some things to help out over there, which is good.
Gary, Commissioner Boy had mentioned about the museum. Where are we at on that roof?
The, we signed, the county commission gave President Littakers, the contract is signed, they're waiting on material.
Okay.
We don't actually have an install date, but it will be before the winter.
True. Okay, finished?
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, I had no meetings this week, but last week I did have a public service water district meeting. They went over the audit, there were no deficiencies, everything is hunky-dory. One thing that came out of the audit, there's $4 million in the capacity improvement fee account, which is good and bad, I guess. Good, there's $4 million. Bad, there's only $4 million. Can't do much with $4 million in this day and age, but it's a start.
I'm thinking a lot of things to do with it.
Well, not with water systems. Not when you're talking $50 million for a new Bunker Hill plant and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. But there's, Southbrook is a mainline extension agreement, 208 townhomes and 207 single-family homes, that's pretty good. And Spring Mills Town Center, which is the front yard of Motel 6, or the Old Aitken's motel, it's of course going to be developed. And their, the new woods plant has started up, there's still some problems with the backwash and all that, but they're working that part out. You know, it was pretty much my meeting.
I know early in, when they took over that system, they had a tremendous amount of water leaks.
It was, yeah, it was terrible.
System, so I'm sure they got that squared away.
Yeah, they're work, of course, they're still working on the leaks because they, you know, new ones pop up, but of course, it's redoing the plant that really is what's going to set it off, of course. And of course, they're redoing the sewer plant.
That's in worse shape than the water system.
Yeah. So, you know, it was, it was in dire need of somebody taking it over.
Okay. Commissioner Kettle.
I wanted to make a statement publicly that I visited the courthouse farm park recently. I wanted to compliment the Parks and Rec Board for the new nature play area on the east side of Tuscula Creek at the courthouse. It's a fabulous addition to that park, it's a perfect fit for that park. And I know that county funds were used to purchase that equipment and have the installation of it, and it's in use now. It's just a terrific addition to courthouse farms, so compliments to Parks and Rec. Last Thursday evening, after we had an ambulance authority meeting, and we have actually extended for one month, the, you had until the end of September to file for your homestead exemption waiver on the new $25 increase. So we increased that time another month to the month of October, in order to be able to sign up and get your waiver. At this point, only about one-third of the residents that are on homestead have used that to their advantage.
Obviously.
I, I, I hope, our hope is, is to get to about 50% at least by the end of October, so...
Will they be trying to do any educational opportunities to remind those folks?
And we discussed that stuff, and one of the things, next year, when we send out the mailings about your fees, is to have a separate printout about this exemption thing, homestead exemption thing. You know, the one this year was kind of hidden in the thing in fine print, so we're going to do a better job. They're doing more with the media to get the word out, you know, radio, newspapers, so...
I'd like to see them do a blip in the paper, even though that readership is not as strong as it was, a lot of the older folks still do get the paper, write the papers.
And the other thing that I've been told, and I think this is happening, is that when people come in to pay their fee, that they're actually asking them at that time, are you on homestead exemptions?
Yeah, she, she asked me that, she actually gave me the form to fill out, and...
Right. Now, that only affects those that come in in person, which is a lot of the people that do, but still, hopefully, you know, by this time next year, we'll have 80, 90% of the people that qualify. And what's amazing is, a lot of people didn't even know they qualified for homestead exemption until they were asked. So we're sending people over to Larry's office to actually register for homestead exemption, which is helping them even more than, you know, that $20,000 deduction on your assessed value is important, so... So, so we're working through it, you know, and then, of course, after the first of the year, January, one gets here, then the billing process will start for the non-residential fees that have never been in place. This is something new to offset the loss of that. And truthfully, I think it's going to more than offset the loss of the money that they've lost due to the allowance exemptions, so... Tuesday, I had a sewer board and stormwater board meetings. Sewer Board is finishing up on quite a few projects and is moving forward, and I'm very pleased with their progress. Stormwater, we got into a very interesting conversation about the West Virginia DEP and the permit that we applied for and how they were dragging their feet, and they are a difficult agency, to say the least, to... So at this point, their attorney has been working with the DEP to try to get the permit approved and as a co-permittee, which we approved to do, and it seemed to me like that's what they were asking for all along, and we've done that. So we just don't quite understand the reasoning for the delay on approving this application, but nonetheless, hopefully, things are going to work out here over the next month or so.
They actually had seen a snapshot of it prior to being submitted.
But I can say, it's the West Virginia DEP, it's an interesting group, but on Wednesday of this past week, this week yesterday, I guess it was, Doug and Smith and I met with Ken Petrusi over at the city offices about the PO Volker parking lot and the stormwater issue there. And I think that we had a very good meeting, and I think that we made progress, and I'm hoping that we can work with the city and the board a bit to potentially get the paving done on the parking lot there that's county property. We're never going to get a price as cheap as what is being offered with the asphalt companies doing the city streets, so hopefully, we can make this happen over the next month or so, and get it done. And then on Monday, I will be traveling to Charleston on Sunday to attend a board meeting for the County Commission Association of West Virginia Monday morning at 10 o'clock in Charleston. Their board meeting at the end of this month, in October, is actually going to be at Cape and State Park. It's a two-day meeting on the 29th and 30th of October, and I'm looking forward to representing not only us, but our region as a legislative chair on that board, so... And then our Workforce Region 7 meeting, Bill Clark is our new president, he actually asked for a phone vote because there was no important matters, new matters that needed to be discussed, just old business. And so we're just responding by email on a vote to approve the minutes and things that, instead of everyone attending the meeting, maybe in Romney or someplace, so... That's all I have. I'm very busy.
Thank you. Actually, Candy and I went to courthouse farm park yesterday, beautiful day, and got to witness a lot of kids using the outdoor park that was just completed, and they were doing some tensioning on the cables. I wasn't able to route the zipline, but maybe next time. On Monday evening, had a planning commission meeting, and Hickory Ridge subdivision came before us requesting an extension on their project. That extension was denied. That project was submitted in 2004, and it was suggested to them, not suggested, it was motion to go back to sketch plan review. So all the permits that they had from different agencies had expired, so that project was not extended. Also, on preliminary plan, this is a major project on the north end of the city, but it's in the county at the APM Hotel. There's planned there for a 264-unit apartment complex out of five different buildings, and an 11-story hotel is the plan. So it got approved through the preliminary plan after a few questions about the roadway, and there have been some requirements made by the state to improve that intersection. And that's about it.
Is that going where that currently is at?
Yeah, it'd be demolished and reconstructed on that site. I think there's a 16-acre site there.
Where again?
At the Old Holiday Inn, right there at exit 16.
That place is run down.
It needs a little attention, for sure. Okay, well, we're right on the money for our audit bid opening.
Yes, sir. This, Mr. President, this, the bid openings for fiscal year '23, as you all know, these services, we get an approved vendor list from the auditor's office. Our RFP was submitted to all of the approved vendors. You have seven written denials that can't perform services, and you have three vendors that have provided services for the audit, the county audit for fiscal year '23.
Okay.
And are any of them the ones that have done it in the past?
There are, I believe Perry and Associates, I see on Mr. Gilgan Howard, Frank Purnheim, they have performed the audit, from I know it's the last three consecutive, but could be longer.
Yeah, the first bid is, as mentioned, through Perry and Associates, and their bid for a fixed fee of $33,250. And that's Perry and Associates. So tough.
I think it's tough for nine. There's one right here.
And the second one is from Lisa Thornburg out of Milton, West Virginia, who is not submitting a bid. Did you not have the ability to?
Say it was all for small bits, you would.
The next bid is from BHM CPA Group. Excuse me? I'm sorry, B, B as in Boy, BHM. Well, yes, without making this easy to find here.
I think they're going to donate their services to...
No matter how hard we try not.
I think we'd be getting there by now. Yeah, I don't see any totaled up number there.
Mr. President, this is the, they just give a total for you. Total hours, we'd have to do, we wouldn't want to do it if it looks to be any purposes or records, we have to clarify.
I saw the rates for each individual auditor.
And they have the quantity of hours and the total sum of hours, so... And it looks to be 30,000 even. 30,000 even.
Okay. Those bids have been received, and they'll be reviewed.
There's an audit committee, and...
Right. And they'll be able to be scored at that point, right?
It's a defined process by the state audit office.
Very good. Thank you.
Where's the BHM from?
BHM.
Where are they from?
Huntington, West Virginia.
And I'm sorry, I missed Wago. We had a Jason Stedman submit an application for the airport authority, if we could get him scheduled and for interview, please. Thank you. Okay, Will, we're ready for you. How are you doing this morning?
Good, Mr. Fire Commissioners, thank you. We do have one change from your read ahead. We, instead of 40, we actually have 39 estates for settlement interim or final for the month of October 2023. The only change is the subtraction of the final settlement for the estate of Jessica Stocker, which seemingly needed additional time to set up a trust as established by the last woman testament of a decedent. Thus, my office placed the estate on next month's list for your consideration. Additionally, all other estates proposed for settlement here this morning, as prepared in your read ahead, have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objections to date from any interested parties of these estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience here today, I ask for this commission's consideration for approval of the 39 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of October 2023.
Very good. You've heard a request from our fiduciary supervisor, need a motion to approve the 39 estates as submitted.
Mr. President, I'm moved to approve 39 settlement, settlement list for estates as presented.
Thank you, sir. They're properly moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you. Want to go ahead and sign it now?
Yeah. Get that on public record.
So you've got anything for us in the future?
Next week is a matter of fact, yeah.
Oh. Sorry, I am.
It shouldn't be, there is a possibility that actually, and I will work with Penny's office to confirm this, there might be a settlement prior to that, the need for it here. We'll keep in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Okay, we're running just a few minutes ahead of schedule. We have a 10:15. Robert Mahaffey has a candidate for the library board, and I see he's not here yet. Sure, let's go ahead and move Mr. Wine to the front of the class.
So one of the first item that you have from me is with our, Jack cringes just at the fact we're talking about it, but our snow removal contract is that you open, is ready for the execution of the commission for optional year number two or out year number one, however you want to look at it. The price has increased very minimal. It was all based on the market, and that was written in the contract originally, so it's just a simple exercise for the county commission to award out year number two to Pitcher Chapel Pines. They clean the health department in some of our bigger parking lots when we need help and we can't do ourselves, so.
What's the criterion, how much snow?
It all depends. They only come when Jack calls them, they don't just come running, but they made a change when it's more than 12 inches. Jack's like, it's not moving more than 12 inches at a time.
Yeah, I think it, I think it would be, they want to be able to stay on it every two inches.
Correct.
So it didn't get ahead of them.
That is correct, but that's all based on what facility calls.
Well, what do you think, this winter?
I, Mr. Lang threatens me when I talk, even say the word SNOW, so they put off till the last minute, just putting the blades on the trucks and getting sold out.
I worry more about ICE than I do the second one.
So we just need the commission's approval to exercise year number two at Pitcher Chapel Pines.
It's gonna be an El Nino winter. I told you the other day I didn't have any acorns yet in my house, well, they're falling down, and there are more acorns than I've ever seen. They're not big, but there are millions of them. So that tells me the snows are coming.
Okay. Motion to approve Pitcher Chapel Pines LLC for our snow removal for a 122 Weberley So moved.
Sir.
They're properly moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, has anybody checked the, what are called the?
Hominac?
No, the little, the caterpillars.
Oh, I haven't seen any.
Haven't either.
A little early yet, they're coming.
Yeah. You ready, or?
I'm gonna do another one. So the second item from me, you have, if you recall, on September 28th, the county commission opened bids for a public safety drone package. That bid was designed and published based on the receiving and the award of a grant we have from the federal government. In our efforts in designing the package and advertising and receiving the bids, which was a single bid, we came across an issue where our specifications actually allowed the submission of the product that came. It was a DJI drone that is not on, what we now have learned, is the Department of Defense's DIU, which is Defense Innovation Unit. They have what they call an approved list, blue list, and the drone that is submitted is not on that list. So if we were to buy it, we could not use our grant funds, which would pay for the whole package. So our recommendation to the commission is that we not accept that bid, we modify the specifications, and we rebid so that we can in fact use the grant funds that we're in possession of.
Sounds like a plan.
We hope so.
Okay, I need a motion to, to accept the county administrator's suggestion to deny the bid that we received.
Sir, move.
Second. Properly moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahaffey, we're ready for you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
Stand your.
Glad to be back with you all.
You're a force today as a member for the library board.
Right.
Yes, sir. Well, tell us a little bit about yourself, as you did a couple weeks ago, if you would, please.
Right, sure. Well, I'm Rob Mahaffey, and I'm honored to be invited back to the commission to discuss the library. When it came to my attention that there was a vacancy here possibly, my first thoughts went to the relationship between the museum commission and library. It seemed, my way of thinking, that that really was thin. And so when I looked into it, and thanks to Commissioner Boyd, I really kind of thought about the possibility of joining the board, and that with wretched pride, I also spoke with my dear friend Howie Taylor, who was the library here in Shepherdstown. And it seemed to me that that connection would be really helpful for the county, and not just with the library board, the museum commission, but with our educational system across the county. So that's why I appreciate the nomination.
Okay, we'll go, keep this very casual.
Sure.
Comfortable for you, and we'll just go through a small linear questions. Mr. Boyd?
I really don't have any questions, though he's highly qualified, and he has some knowledge of what took place in Shepherdstown to get their library done, and I know we're facing a lot of challenges at our library, so I did ask him to apply for a position, and the ties between the museum and the library are great, so I appreciate you accepting the nomination and be willing to help out.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Martin.
There's more to the library than just the museum commission.
Sure.
And as a member of the library board, you'd be involved with the other items that the library is charged with or should be charged with. You know, because the idea of a library is changing from a repository of books to all kinds of items where, you know, they're involved with the community and children's work and all this kind of stuff. So do you have any ideas for the library other than, you know, joining with the museum board and like that?
Sure, Mr. Martin. Little background, I served as president of the organization concerned about rural education, which is a national advocacy organization on behalf of our 12 million children that live in rural and remote places and tribal lands. And the American Library Association was a key member of that coalition. So I spent a number of years on advisory boards with the American Library Association, and also working with the Coalition for Community Schools, which placed a high value on public libraries and their relationship with school libraries. I'm no librarian, and I'll say that upfront, and I won't overstate what I know about the inner workings of a library system. I do know that our county has four locations, and the annex, which I actually spend a little bit more time at, I have it's from Mills because I live on the White Inseance Act. So back to the annex, and I'm hoping, realizing the finances, that that annex, it serves a real purpose in that part of our county. I'm curious, because in my experience of visiting schools around the country, I've never seen a public library located in a high school like it is at Mussum. So that's an interesting thing to look at. And then, of course, the infrastructure investments in the library system are very important. One other quick thought, I testified on Capitol Hill when there was effort afoot to drastically cut public libraries across the country, particularly in rural places, and we were successful in killing that legislation. So that's really the extent where I feel I can contribute to.
Very good. Commissioner Callahan?
I have no questions for you, Mr. Mahaffey, but I do want to thank you for being willing to, you know, again, come up and volunteer your time to serve on this board, and I've heard nothing but good things about you, and obviously, the new museum board's gonna be a real challenge, and you've been voted as the chair of that, and that speaks enough for me that we're certainly qualified to serve on any board that we have, and I wish you nothing but the best in the museum situation, and thank you again for being, offering to give even more time to serve on the library board as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, good morning, sir. You know, as I look through the bit of the resume that you submitted, it's pretty impressive, and, you know, you may not be a librarian, but obviously you know the framework of the structure that needs to be in place or can work within that framework, make corrections from your experiences as necessary from your past experience that you've had, if you've traveled that much through all the systems. You mentioned the community library at Mussum High School. It is unique, and it works very well. I know that for a fact. My wife was a librarian there for several years, so it's a great addition to that community to have access to the technology of today that a lot of folks may not have at home. So it's used quite a bit by the community and works extremely well, and I would hope that you would continue to support that effort. That's all I have, unless you have anything else that you'd like to add. I'd like to thank you for your willingness to give back, and that's important, that's what makes us work, you know. It would come from all walks of life and all thought, different thought processes, and that's what makes us a great place to be.
Well, Commissioner, I am very grateful to call Berkeley County my home. Museum commission has opened my eyes in so many ways, so it's an honor for me to be able to serve in any way that I may.
Very good. Thank you. Now, I'd as well just stay put there.
Well, can I add one thing?
Sure.
I know we don't normally do this, but this has been a vacancy for a while, and I think he's very highly qualified, so I would like to make a motion to go ahead and make him to the library board. You guys are okay with that?
Very good. I would check into it. You've heard the motion, it's been properly.
Is this a full term or an expired term?
Mr. Martin's been vacant since I left the board in December of '22.
So it's a full term?
Oh, yeah, it's a full five years from when I vacated, so.
Okay. Okay, been properly moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? As have it. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll have to, well, when you get your letter, you'll have to go to the county clerk to be sworn in.
Right.
Okay, next thing up is the presentation of the bylaws for the Portia County Museum
Let me first say that when I went to the organizational meeting in August of '17, I never intended to be elected the chair of the new museum commission. In fact, I recall when we met for that organizational meeting, that there are a lot of people on this commission that know a great deal more about the history of our county, workings of government, and the history of how the commission established the museum commission. But I am a quick study, and I pride myself on digging into things and learning about them, and that's been the real payoff for me over the last couple of months. Commissioner Boyd and Matt said we would not be where we are with the museum commission had been their vision. When I sort of dug into this, the preparation that the commission has done, what has led to the establishment of the museum commission, the vision for the commission is very exciting. So I nominated to be the chair, and at which point in time, those gentlemen that were there, the first thing I said was, we will, if I'm to accept this, we will not have a vote on my moving in as the chair. We'll have a slate of officers, people need to step up, and we'll vote on a slate of officers. And in short order, Matt, Vice Chair Jody Williams-Price as Secretary, and Helen Harris as Treasurer stepped up, and so we had a slate of officers that were unanimously approved. We, I made three promises at that meeting. One was, every member of this commission will have all the materials they need, least a week in advance, so that they have time to comment on the agenda, review the materials, and be prepared. Second was, we're gonna start on time, and we're gonna end on time. And if there are items that need to be moved to another agenda, we can do that. Everyone will have their time to speak and their say, but we will start on time now. And the third is, we're gonna have fun. I mean, this is an exciting project for our county, for our citizens. So with that said, I think our first, not first, second, but full meeting on the 28th of last month was a great meeting. Only one commissioner for an excuse, understanding, making it, we do have a vacancy, as you know, needs to be filled. So all in all, the meeting went quite well, and of course, adopting the bylaws to forward for your approval was key on that agenda. So the bylaws have been reviewed, there were minor edits, thanks again to Matt at pulling all the documentation together. The commission presents to you your approval of the minutes as they've been, or the bylaws as they've been submitted.
And Anthony has reviewed those?
Yes, there's just a couple minor, not, nothing substantial, just a couple.
My only concern is the buildings at the museums that are gonna be housed, and are gonna be county property and continue to be county property, and everything as far as that relationship and how that will work is.
That doesn't mean bylaws.
Okay.
That would be separate.
Like an MOU or something of that nature?
Yeah.
And I had reviewed the bylaws last night and spoke with Matt this morning. Matt, Matt was very comfortable with it, and he said he had taken it to Anthony, so any other questions on the bylaws? Okay, I need a motion to approve the bylaws for the Burke County Museum
Okay. Need a motion to approve the bylaws for the Berkeley County Museum Commission.
I make that motion.
Then properly moved?
Same.
Moved and seconded. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes have it. Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. At this time, we're going to take a short break. We will be back at 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Back in session. Next up is Tracy Gilliam's grant administrator. Morning Tracy.
Good morning.
What you got for us?
Um, money and lots of it.
Yay.
Um, we just want you to start with what I have on my...
Uh, sure. The first one that I have is the comprehensive opioid stimulant abuse.
This is a continuation grant of it funds our Joe Tip program of the Day Report Center. Um, we asked for continuation and they granted it for 36 months for 1.3 million dollars and there is no match. Um, it will fund one full-time project coordinator salary in French for three years at 216,906. Two full-time peer recovery coaches salary in French for three years at seven, I'm sorry, 378,186. One full-time case manager salary in French for three years, 189,093. And one full-time therapist salary in French for three years, 310,215. For a total of 1,094,400. And required attendance at BGA conference in year two and three at 4,060. Outreach supplies for three years at 44,040. And a research partner for three years totaling 157,500.
Are these people here now or they would be hired?
These are all current employees. The only, we're picking up, everybody was covered under the previous grant. We're only, we're picking up a therapist, which he already has employed. We're just adding her to this grant.
So that's a, it's, and that's a three-year grant. So let's go and extend that. At least with, well, during this grant, three more years for sure.
Mr. Barnark, to your point, Tim Zai and I had a conversation, a very uncomfortable conversation about six weeks ago. The conversation that he, he came was that the feds weren't moving fast and I was concerned that this particular grant was not going to get extended. Uh, so I gave him the direction to let these affected people know. Potentially, uh, that even though the grant would expire in October, uh, that December 31st could very well be. Uh, he, he stressed and stressed and he never ever, ever had, had the conversation because before he did it, uh, Tracy facilitated him. So they're there, but when, when these staff come on board, one of the conversations Tim has with them is, you know, this is a hundred percent grant funded, so be prepared and we'll give you as much notice as possible. But in the event the grant funding isn't renewed, there's a very high probability that the position would have to be on. But Tim was ha- very happy to do it.
I guess he was. Sure he was, and so was everybody else.
Three years.
Three more years. And as well as the folks that are enrolled in those programs.
Well, speaking, what's the progress report on the extension of the, of the building?
It's moving right along. They, we, we met yesterday and no hiccups yet.
An excavator, we're digging up the...
A little one if you want to take a look. You got a big dog over there.
Yeah.
So all good, moving along, on target.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the BGA grant for fiscal year 2023 comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance acceptance. Joe Tip. Your motion. Shall I move? Second.
Second.
Probably move the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Thank you. And the next one that I have is the BGA Edward Memorial.
Um, this is for, from the Department of Justice. Um, for the court marshals, it is for 24 months. It takes that long. Um, it is a formula. We were awarded 15,257. And it will pay for the following: three communication radios at 4,600 for a total of 13,800. And 10 duty belts totaling 1,457.
I guess these radios are a central position that they...
No, sir. They're, they're the portables that they use in their body. They're part of the statewide interoperability radio network, Fire Law EMS and court martial law uses that.
So how come we only get three?
Because they're very expensive and they only fund that much.
Oh, really?
The, I think the total asked for re-upfitting was 200 some thousand, so it's a big ticket. A little bit at the time.
A $600 radio?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. And they're, they're pretty impressive. You can, you can talk to Charles soon, you can...
Talk across state. It's, it's backed much like the drone. Uh, there's only particular radios that can be bought. Um, and they're different models. This is a mid-level mono HD, but I can tell you, these are Motorola radios. And Eddie carried, the same radio Eddie carried for 10 years is still in use. So they're no joke. They're serious.
Yeah, they're good. It's a good piece of equipment. Okay, I need a motion to approve the BGA Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant.
So moved.
Properly moved.
Second.
Second. Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Thank you. And the next one ma'am is the Stop School Violence Program.
Um, this is a new grant. Um, it is for 36 months ending 9/30/2026. It is for the Sheriff's Department, the school resource officers and Buckland County Schools to be partnered with. Um, it will, it will pay for salaries in years one, two and three. These are not new employees. We were just picking up employees that are not covered by a grant. Um, at the Day Report Center, it will pay for a catalyst therapist for 198,189 for three years. It will pay for three active shooter bailout bags at 165. It will pay for a simulated virtual training system at 252,601. It will pay for, in years one, two and three, three trainings at the National Association of School Resource Officers. For four school resource officers, the registration, travel, hotel and meals at 15,491. Um, in years one, two and three, two juvenile case managers, their salary in French at 390,000. Years two and three, a consulting firm at 142,202, which includes a pilot program. That includes three trainings for targeted school violence, behavior threat assessment and management training for the school resource officers, the teachers and the school personnel to assist to develop and implement standardized threat reporting and assessment protocols in the schools. And assist in creating, implementing and operations of the school-based threat assessment protocol. And then in years two and three, required attendance at the National Conference Uh, for the Bureau of Justice Administration in Washington between the registration, travel, hotel and meals at 1,388.
Where would all this be housed?
Um, which, with the, the, the equipment?
Well, you got two juvenile case managers and...
The two juvenile case managers are at the Day Report Center and the catalyst program along with the therapist is also at the Day Report Center.
Just the reason the expansion.
Yep, and...
Can't be built soon in that kind of...
You know, I, I think that any time that we can take advantage of those dollars to be able to help kids through these difficult times and be able to help educate our resource officers is a tremendous opportunity for this county. So I need a motion to approve the BGA grant fiscal year 23 Stop School Violence Program.
So moved.
Second.
The proper move the second. All in favor say aye? Eyes have it. Motion pass.
Will this grant be, is capable of being renewed, you think?
Um, it's possible with the right justification and arguments to continue. Um, it is quite possible.
Okay. Do you, do you have anything else for us?
No, I'm done.
No more money?
No more money today.
Come on. Well, thank you, thank you and your team for your, your work and uh, thanks for your presentation this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you Tracy. Okay, next up we have a board commission interview. Deidre Johnson. Candidate for the museum board. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
How you doing this morning, board?
Pretty good.
Good. You're on.
Just kinda going in and out. I need that I speak loud. Um, yes, my name is Deidre Johnson and um, I've been here for about three years. I worked in the museum field, um, at the Indianapolis Children's Museum. It's the world's largest children's museum. And, um, I was responsible for two galleries. Um, that dealt with exhibits and keeping a flow of interactive educational programming. However, um, after that I moved on to work for the government and I spent 15 years as an international logistician and linguist. I'm quite accustomed to taking large groups of people who have extremely opposing ideas or divergent ideas and backgrounds and working on a long-term goal that is pragmatic, um, realistic. And I'm familiar with that kind of environment and also a multi-agency government, whole government approach to things. So that is why I would be interested. I may have only lived here for three years, but I've already been immersed pretty much in the Berkeley County history. It's amazing here. I've been volunteering at many of the sites, many of the events. I've worked for the past two years on digitizing and indexing. Um, it's a database that the Smithsonian uses to keep track of all the historical objects and to make them accessible and easily used by other people. Um, this county... objects and to make them accessible and easily used by other people. This county is interested in having a local museum. A lot of residents have some quite historical treasures hidden in their barns, just waiting for the moment. I would be honored to be a part of the planning commission to help that see the light of day. Is there anything?
Hey, we'll just we'll just come down the line and ask some some questions, but please please be relaxed and comfortable and we'll we'll make this easy.
Mr. Board.
I was curious. So you worked at that children's museum. What were the exhibits that you worked on there?
So the two galleries I was responsible for was it was called Historic Main Street, no longer exists, but it was the local history and that was its focus. The other one was Passports to the World, which was the international blending pot at the area.
What brings you to Berkeley County?
I chose to come here after being out of the country for fifteen years. Didn't want to live near DC.
I'm delighted for that.
Can't imagine that.
So did some circling from the map as a different distance, stopped in in a lot of different smaller towns, bigger towns, and we hit here and to be honest, I just really liked it here. And I haven't regretted it since.
It's funny when you talk about the history of Berkeley County and most people think that goes back to the seventeenth century, the eighteenth century. Well, to me, it goes back six hundred million years because that's to me the history of Berkeley County. That's just the difference in me and everybody else.
You were that old, Jim?
I'm not.
Geology, archaeology.
I know the history of Berkeley County six hundred million years ago and it's fascinating. But welcome to Berkeley County.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I will I will study up more on the geology and archaeology.
Were we underwater at that time is my question.
Well, I give you a hint. North Mountain is upside down.
Yeah.
So there you go. Start with that.
Mr. Catlin.
You asked.
I don't have a follow-up.
Yeah, you asked.
How long were you in Indianapolis?
Pardon?
How long were you in Indianapolis?
Oh, do you mean at the museum or how long did I live at the museum?
Yeah, it's a great city. I spent some time there years ago. Almost got kicked out of the zoo, but other than that, I was misbehaving. But I didn't get to it. Was the children's museum back in the how long was it date back then?
Oh, gracious. Long before I was born. It started out as small. It really, really extended in the nineties. In the nineties is when I believe it received its justification as a work.
I was there before that.
Okay.
That's interesting. But I I think your database of work is might be very helpful to the museum boards. We always, as anyone that comes forward, wants to we appreciate very much you willing to offer your time as a volunteer to our boards and we just thank you for that and I'm sure that you'll be given serious consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. Very pretty impressive resume. You actually have some experience with museums and I think that's a big plus for us. Kind of trying to get started. It's important, I think, to have people on the ground floor that have experienced other things in other places that you can bring here that will hopefully help us get get our museum up. And it may not be the largest in the world, but we sure like to have it to be the best in the world, you know? So you have quite a background and obviously you're a very patient person. If you bring people with opposing ideas and can can work out agreements to move forward, it's a lot of patience. So I thank you for coming in today. And as Commissioner Catlin said, you know, thanks for your willingness to serve in Berkeley County. Unless there's anything else that you have, the commission, the museum commission will, you know, discuss it and we'll make that recommendation later on. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time.
All right. Okay, next up we have Mr. Wine. How about trick or treat?
Trick or treat. So the commission needs to follow suit and actually make it public. I believe it's been discussed to do it Tuesday, the thirty-first, penny from what was the time? Was it six to eight?
Six to eight.
It's kind of late.
It's always been. It's always been because I've been trick or treating my granddaughters for the last.
It's dark.
Yeah.
You let mom and dad get home to take them.
It's not fun until after it gets dark anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't want to do it in the daylight. They start.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve trick or treat in the county October thirty-one from six until eight PM.
I dress up like a gorilla every year and pass out the candy at my daughter's house and scare half the kids away and.
Doesn't even give.
Well, I wanted to say that, but not really. I don't eat the stuff, thank goodness. But anyway, you didn't need to hear all that. Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir, I do.
I make a motion that we celebrate trick or treat on the thirty-first of October from sixteen.
And Mr. Catlin dresses up as a gorilla.
Mr. Catlin dresses up as a gorilla.
He'd be a big gorilla.
I'm pretty intimidating with my size.
Okay, we have a motion. Do you second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Ayes have it. Motion.
Yes, it is.
Excuse me?
I was asking the same time.
No double dipping this year.
We'll have trunk or treats, trick or treats.
And we we have a state budget revision number three out of Fund Zero Zero One, Mr. Wine.
You do. So three million thirty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars of increased revenue on the general county side. Two million eight hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars is a simple move from the ARPA account into general county to pay for the construction costs. So don't get excited. We didn't stumble on anything.
Okay. You have my hopes up.
No, sir.
New money.
Not new money. There's a little bit of new money, but two million eight hundred sixty-five two hundred and twenty-three dollars is not new. That will be placed in your other buildings account, which what we've been doing, when we get the the bills from the GC or whatever projects are going on, we'll get the draw, get move the money from and you see those on your purchase order form. We'll move the money from the ARPA account into general county and then we'll pay the bill post. So none of the tax revenue is going out in front to pay these invoices.
Transferred at first.
First payment.
Absolutely correct.
So two million eight hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars into other buildings to cover construction costs, five thousand into the extension services travel account, which is you do it every year. This is part of the transaction where the school board contributes and we move the money across covers travel expenses. One hundred forty-one thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars back into your contingency account, which raises it up to nine hundred five thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Don't get excited about that number either. We've got some deficiencies that probably not the next one, but potential with November budget revision. We'll talk about that in some of the accounts and fixing those. IT, twenty thousand back into their their line item or that account for if you want to put it, oh, into do some subscriptions. Some of the outside agencies like BMM Story, Fireboard, we prepay maintenance cost for cellular cost and things like that for the fire trucks and ambulances and we build them annually. We build them at the very first of July. We're just getting those in, so we need to put that money back. There were a lot more of IT money that came in, revenue generated, but I put that in contingency because we're going to need it. We'll see. So typically when IT bills it out, it comes right back into IT. This time I I kept about eighty thousand dollars in contingency because we're going to need it. And lastly, two thousand dollars into printing for the county commission's line item. We've had some printing things come up that we paid for. One was reimbursed by the endless story. If you remember, we did a PSA in the paper a few times for the bills. Our line item ran a little low, but they reimbursed us a hundred percent. This is just putting that money back in the county commission's printing account.
Speaking of ARPA funds, I noticed the fire services or the fire thing has moved.
The Fire Board.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We moved them Monday. Voter's registration is moving right now. That move for voter's registration in the new space will be final tomorrow. So, yes.
I was I visited them this morning. They're extremely happy with their with their new home. Every office that they have has a window.
Yeah, you can see them doing everything in there when you walk by.
Yeah, well, there's a there's a nice set of blinds there also, but they're very pleased with their their new home.
So the the total request is additional three million thirty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars into the general county and dispersed at the same into the individual accounts.
Okay, need a motion to approve the budget revision number three for Fund Zero Zero One as submitted by the county administrator.
So moved.
Second. Been properly moved and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I think we're finished until one thirty. We have Chuck Young from Cox Holiday will be here at one thirty, so we'll be in recess.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just saw.
...
Okay, we're back in session. We do have pending litigation and personnel matters. Any motion to go into executive session?
Mr. President, I move to go into executive session for personnel and legal matter.
A second. The proper motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session. There will be no action taken coming out of executive session. However, at this time, we have Chuck Young with Cox Holiday. Presentation to the County Commission of Financial Statement 2023.
Thank you.
Actually, Charlie's going to present the financials.
You just hear for moral support?
Moral support.
So yes, Chuck usually makes his presentation and this is my first year, so maybe be a little patient with me.
Sure.
But thank you so much for having us here today. And I did rearrange your schedule a little bit to accommodate ours. Really appreciate that. I'm here, I'm Charlie Heilmann, and I'm here to present the financial statements that will go into your legal advertisement for West Virginia code. Before I get started, I want to throw out some additional thank yous. These financial statements are no small feat. It takes a team and we get information from a lot of different people, including Gary, Penny, Sherry, and the finance office, the tax office, and the grant department. So I really appreciate them gaining this information timely so we can complete financial statements prepared. And then I'd like to just start off with an overview, kind of set the stage of what you're going to see today. And if, I would like to start back in fiscal year 2021. We're in the height of the COVID pandemic. We started to get grant revenues that are both funding $11.5 million in fiscal year 21 and in fiscal year 2022. Now we have to spend those funds. They are required to be sent by December of 2026. So that's what we're going to see this year, spending down, the county is spending down those funds. So now I'll turn to the draft statements that you have. And you're probably notice they're arranged a little differently than we've done in the past. Usually the government-wide statements are first, followed by the fund statements. We have them arranged on level, then government-wide, just for presentation purposes, I think they'll be slightly easier to follow. So page one, we have the balance sheet of governmental funds. And this doesn't look like probably the typical balance sheet that you're used to seeing. It's what we call modified accrual. And you don't see any fixed assets, long-term debt, any or any pension liabilities, assets, deferred inflows or outflows. So to jump right in, total assets as of June 30th, 2023, $36 million. Thirty-five million of that is in cash. Total liabilities, $187,000. Hundred seventy-eight of that is related to accounts payables or regular trade payables. And it's just due to timing of when you got invoices in and when they were paid. Total fund balance, $35.5 million. You'll see that at the bottom of page one. That is a decrease from last year of $13.9 million, and we'll get into that on the next page. Now I'd like to compare that to, this statement to last year's statement. Total assets are down $15 million. Fourteen million of that is in cash. Taxes receivable down $560,000. That indicates to me that you had better collections in your fiscal year 23 than you did in fiscal year 22. Liabilities, $634,000 this year compared to $187,000. This year, that's really just timing of when you received invoices and when they were paid. Now I'd like to go to page two. This is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And one thing that you'll see here is that your capital outlays aren't expenditure line item. I am getting ahead of myself, so let's just start with revenues. Total revenues, $53.7 million. Three line items make up 75% of that. Property taxes of $26.8 million, charges for services of $8 million, so that's things such as inspection fees, IRP fees. Other taxes of $5.6 million, and that's mainly going to be your property transfer tax. Going down to expenditures, $67.6 million. Again, two line items make up 75% of this. General government expenditures and public safety. General government expenditures were $28.3 million for fiscal year 2023. A little over 50% of that was related to salaries, wages, payroll taxes, and employee benefits, only $14.6 million. The other items in there include repairs and maintenance, professional services, insurance, utilities, supplies, and materials. Public safety, $22.2 million. Sixty percent of this is related to payroll and employee benefits. Reminders for equipment, training, travel, supplies, and materials, repairs and maintenance. Then the other big line item you're going to see, there's capital outlay. That's almost 16% of your total expenditures for the year. And this were for fixed asset purchases such as land renovations and vehicles, at $10.8 million. So we have a situation where our expenditures are greater than our revenues, so we have a deficit for the year of $13.9 million. And again, we sent $10.8 million in capital outlay, and then 2.6 of allowable ARPA distributions. And I would like to add that those capital outlays are also allowable ARPA expenditures, or expenditures. So now let's compare this to last year. Revenue last year was $6.2 million compared to $53.7. And we already touched on it. The main differences in our grant revenues, we received $11.5 million in grant revenues last year that we did not get this year. Expenditures, $47.6 million last year compared to $67.6 million this year. That's a $20 million increase in expenditures. Other than the fixed asset purchases that we already discussed and the allowable ARPA distributions, salaries and wages was the main part of that increase at $4.6 million due to pay increases across the board. Now I'm going to go to page three. And this is the statement of net position. So we, we're done with our modified accrual statements and fund level financial statements, and we're to the government-wide statements. On the net position, you are going to see your fixed assets, long-term debt. You're also going to see the building commission here, except it's a business-type activity. You're also going to see the required pension reporting. So to jump right in. Total assets, you're going to see the total there about midway, page three, $112 million. And 35.2 million of that is cash, 76 million is in your fixed assets. Next, you have deferred outflows. So this is the required pension reporting. This, these numbers come from the state of West Virginia. And they're based off of 630 2022 numbers. The most meaningful number in this section for you is the $2.47 million for employer contributions. So that's how much Berkeley County contributed to employee pension plans and OPAP plans in fiscal year 2023, and that is on your balance sheet. Now if we go over to page four, we have the liabilities. Total liabilities for June 30th of 2023 is $49 million. Forty-two million of this is related to revenue bonds related for the building commission. You're going to start seeing those roll off in your fiscal year 30, so December in 2029, those will start rolling off in 2020B and 2020C. You're also going to see you have a net pension liability of $4 million and compensate patentes of $1.4 million. Going on to the next page, on page five. We have more required reporting for the pension for deferred inflows, $527,000. Total net position for the year, $70 million, and that's a decrease of $1.9 million that we'll go over in the statement of activities on page six. Now I'd like to just compare what this statement of net position for June 30th, 2023, to last year. So total assets is relatively comparable, $112 million each year, but we had some movement. So are, we know our cash went down, $14 million. After depreciation, we have $10 million, we had a $10 million increase in our fixed assets. We also have $13 million in investments for the building commission. So that's really just timing of when the bond closed, and it's money you haven't spent for your projects. Yeah, so that would. And the one thing that you had on your balance sheet last year, or sorry, your statement of net position last year, that you did not have this year is a net pension assets. So this year you do have net pension liability, and that is, a lot of factors go into that, the market and actuarial calculations. And this is a year behind. So last year's net pension asset would have been based on 630 21 numbers. And because of the swing, there were some adjustments on the balance sheet, or on the statement of activities that we will also discuss. All right, page six. Home stretch. This is the statement of activities. And this is a little different. We have expenditure expenses first, then we have revenues. Expenses, total $58.7 million. This includes all the expenditures we talked about on the statement of revenues. Expenditures and fund balance, that includes some other things, non-cash items like depreciation expense, that was $1.67 million. Then revenues. We have $56.7 million. And the same three items make up 75% of revenue, property taxes, charges for services, and property transfer tax. Again, our expenditure, our expenses exceed the revenue, so we have a deficit of $1.9 million. Now if I would compare the statement to prior year, prior expenses, total of $43, $44.3 million compared to $58.7 million in the current year. That's an increase of $14.4 million. Salaries, wages, including salaries and wages, increased about $5 million. We had the allowable ARPA distributions of 2.6. And then last year, we had a wild swing related to that pension that reduced our expenses. That was about $4 million. So our expenses looked higher this year as a result. Revenues, prior year we had $64.3 million compared to $56.7. Again, we did not get the ARPA revenue of 11.5 like we did last year, but this was offset by some several increases. Investment earnings increased $1.4 million. Property taxes, $800,000, and gas and oil tax increased $500,000. That brings me to page seven through nine. These are the reconciliations. And it really just tells you how you get from the fund level financial statements to the government-wide financial statements and the changes that occurred. I believe that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for having us, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think the moral to the story and what Charlie's alluding to is a lot of the numbers when you hear deficit and negative net position is truly all based on timing. In this case, you're not spending more than you have. You just had a whole lot come in that had no expenses tied to it. That's why it looks like this. All in all.
Yes.
Financially, you're, 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 you're in great shape. No one's scared.
Yeah, it, it just looks, we've had, we were coming off of two years where we had significant revenues, and we didn't have any associated expenses with it. Now we have all this money, and we have to spend it, and we have spent it, and that date is December 2026.
And in that, as you all know, we're very slow in process, particularly with expenses, because there's so many steps you have to take before you can let this go. So most of this is tied to big capital expenditures. And it, it takes us at any given point from start to finish, let's talk about a building project, this one in particular. I mean, it took us a year before we ever saw any kind of expense tied to the approved process. So there isn't going to be any problem meeting the deadline. going to be any problem meeting the deadline of having the harvest done, but that's why this looks like it was.
Oh, we're not, we're $13 million in the hole.
We are not.
No.
We're safe.
And more likely, it'll be a similar story next year, because we still have some of that ARPA money to spend out. But two previous years, it was positive, because that money came in, we didn't expend it, because we didn't have the projects listed, or we were just in the process of getting projects started. So I would expect next year to be similar, so at least at least on this level, not at your budget level.
There's nothing that y'all see that alarms you that we should be concerned about in this report at all.
As Alan would say, there's probably 54 counties. He'll thank us. No, I think we're good. Nothing, nothing there that's, all the larger changes, we ID to the grants from this part.
Well, the thing that I see about it, you know, the increase in payroll, we invested in our, in our employees, and we, we closed the door of having employees leaving for other places because of pay. So not only did we keep our valuable employees, our trained employees, we were also able to improve the quality of their life. So that, along with the renovations that we're doing to this building, you know, is obviously reflected in here. You know, they're all, they're all good things.
And not only here, you've got the chillers going on over there, we have, we've gone over, we've got a report center, so we got a lot of good stuff going on.
Yeah, and we're not like some areas where, you know, we are up to speed, we are up to date on our pension contributions, you know, which are important to the employees. So.
Yeah, a lot of the capital outlays is these projects, but not only that, land purchase over up before house ready. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of other things that were bought with that money.
Things to COVID.
Yes, sir.
Very a lot of cash to these assets.
Down the road, we're looking at, we're going to have to expand our judicial center and look at it. Twenty million dollars worth of expense to do that, to renovate the conference building. So that's going to take our debt responsibility up to a higher percentage, and that has me a little nervous. We don't have a choice but to do that, so.
It's kind of like mandated, but no funding.
Right.
And with the current interest rate levels right now, it's not like it was two or years ago.
Right.
One of the things that I, I had written down, but I didn't mention, is currently your, your debt ratio, so your total liabilities or total assets, that's .44. So that does, right now, you still, it's, in my opinion, it might be a little high. It's not, it's still reasonable, don't forget all. But that might be something to keep an eye on, is your debt ratio. Last year was .29, now it's .44. And some, some of that does have to do with pension as well.
And that, that's a number that affects your bond rating too, when you go to bond.
And you have no control.
No, sir.
Pretty good. I see if anyone else has anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, the only other thing is I just want to public, and I see nobody other than a legal team. Jeff, you have something you want to bring up? No? Okay. Mr. Barnhart?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to recess.
Yes, sir, we are in recess.